Jeanne Bouvain and her assistant Rebecca DeCossi. So, we'll have any review of the minutes? Any comments, questions, discussions on the minutes? Hearing done. I'll take a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All in favor except for one exemption. Exemption. Very good.
I think we have the same initials now.
Oh.
Okay. So, I guess if we can get started. Dan, do you want to discuss what you'd like to do here?
Sure. First of all, for those who don't know me, they probably know me from the line of Table Three Restaurant Group in town, but we also own a company called Porchlight Investments that owns all the properties to the restaurant and also the properties located at 420 Main Street across from Cedar Street Grill. In addition, we have a consulting business called Streetlight Concepts, and that's really who I'm employed by as Vice President of Business Development. So, Table Three is one of my projects, as well as managing Porchlight Investments and some other things that Streetlight Concepts is involved in. We purchased the property at 420 Main Street, well, I'm going to say about three to four years ago now. It's been a really good purchase for us. At the time, the Pfeiffer's owned it. They were kind of in the last twilight of what they were going to do with the property. There was a lot of deferred maintenance, not many of the buildings were being used, and, you know, over the years, we've had a pretty aggressive renovation schedule. And up until just recently, we've been at a, you know, 100 percent occupancy, and we've had a very, very busy little plaza here with some of our own businesses, the Cedar Street Cafe, but also we've got some retail on site and also some marketing slash advertising business going on there as well. Our business, the Barnett White Farm, is also a function business that's been doing very well for us, as well as we share space in that lot with Cedar Street Grill, the veterinarian, and occasionally the bird store if he hasn't opened the house. So, it's a very, very, if you were to drive into the parking lot, it looks like a very big parking lot, but I can tell you on a Saturday night, if we have a wedding of, you know, 165 people and Cedar Street's cranking and we may have another function in what we call the Alpheus White Room, which is the front portion of Building Number Two that we took back from Cristieri, our parking lot can get very busy and it can get very full. And we have, we're scattering employees to different areas and so forth to park. So, along with the purchase of the property came this parcel, which is what we call Parcel B. Parcel B is, as we know, is a zone suburban residential. And, you know, we had probably figured, you know, since purchasing the property, that at some point in time, we'd attempt to do something with the land, but, you know, for the first three or four years, we had plenty of work to do, you know, on site, addressing, you know, getting the buildings back up to occupancy, rebuilding, putting businesses in, dealing with deferred maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're kind of at that point now where, you know, we're full and the businesses are doing well, and we're finding that we would like to take a look at this particular parcel and see what we could do with it. The first thing that we did, and I put some visuals for you guys in here because I didn't know what we would have, but the very first picture, if you flip over, it's a, it's just kind of an explosion of a Google Earth map, and it kind of shows you how our property, Parcel B, heads out to Cedar Street. And our first thought was to take a look at, because this was suburban residential, to put some potential housing in there and to be able to utilize the property. And, you know, we thought it would be a nice idea if we could get some condominiums in there, it could be walking community, could walk to town, could walk to our businesses and so forth. So, we went down that avenue to try to explore how we could get in there and potentially develop it for residential use. What we found out is that at the very access point on Cedar Street, that we only had 100 feet of access. So, that was limiting us in terms of being able to utilize that land. We need 150 feet of frontage to be able to get in there. So, we, because of the zoning between the two things, I don't think we could give it to ourselves, nor do I think we have the room. So, unless we were to acquire the home next to us and to combine the two lots, Jeanne and I have talked over time, probably wasn't going to be a way for us to get in there. So, we did have some conversations with the Beamans who live in that home. They're very, very nice people, and they're coming upon their retirement in a few years, and they would be willing to, at some point, sell us that home. So, we went down that road and began to explore, you know, purchasing that home and what it would look like, you know, if we were to actually put some residential property in there. So, again, I didn't know that, what you guys would have, so I just kind of outlined this and showed the access on the altar. This altar is 2014-ish, so it's not perfectly up to date, but it's certainly pretty close for us to work with. If we flip over, it's just one example of some of the styles of townhouses that we looked at. We looked at quite a range of things, from something small around, what we call small around 1,700 feet, to something more luxury oriented at 2,400 square feet. And we ran various and different cost models to see how we would come out in terms of being able to build in there. The next two pictures are just some preliminary drawings. They were just done in terms of exploration, in terms of looking at it and costing it out. One was to, the first one that you're looking at is, would be to acquire the property, to raise the home, to knock it down, and then to build six units. So, per the acreage that we have, we're limited to six acres, with three acres to be able to put six units on there. The next page was another quick study that we looked at in terms of keeping the home and restyling it, coming in another way and putting five units and still having a total of six units per the acreage that we have. And in both cases, you know, the cost of infrastructure, pulling the road in there, pulling services in there, clearing, stumping, today's, and I can tell you because I just built a house, you know, building costs are $185, $185 to $200 a square foot. It's just after doing all that with only six units, there's just no way for us to recover it. In fact, we would come out upside down if we did that. So, with that being said, we've kind of explored, you know, the residential route. We'd still like to be able to look at utilizing this property. I think that for our existing business now and to continue to grow our business, I think we're getting to the point where we do need more parking. We've looked at the very front lawn space. If you're familiar with it, it runs along Route 20. It's a beautiful space. We've landscaped it, sprinkled it. Love to see kids playing ball down there and that kind of stuff on Saturdays with the cafe. But it's a, it's kind of an obvious choice if we're landlocked in the current zoning structure that we have. Prefer not to use it if I don't have to, but obviously to do anything with the other parcel would require a zoning change, and that's where I really could use some help and education and understand the process. And, you know, whether the board would be supportive and feel that potentially the town would be supportive in terms of giving us a zoning change on that particular lot. I hope that's not too long-winded of a discussion of why I'm here, but...
No, I think it's very good, very clear as well. Jeanne, do you have any thoughts that you want to bring up before we ask questions?
No, not really, other than, you know, I thought that this was a really good idea for Dan to come in and talk to the board because, you know, I have my own opinions about this. I, you know, I believe that, you know, we talk about trying to prevent sprawl and helping businesses thrive kind of where they are and doing infill development and things like that versus, you know, rezoning some areas that are maybe green space now. So, excuse me, I think he has a, you know, a fantastic business. He's employing a lot of people, bringing a lot of people into town for the functions that he's holding. We know parking is a real necessity in the entire district, and I think there's a lot of benefits to adding a parking lot, but I didn't know how the board would feel about some potential rezoning. So, I wanted, supported the idea of him coming in and having this conversation this evening.
Right. So, Dan, in the last drawing that you have where you show the Parcel B, that would be the extent of what you'd develop as a parking lot in the red?
Well, you know, it's certainly not engineered.
No, right.
But I certainly, if we were going to do anything in that zone, I would want to leave a nice green space, you know, for my neighbors. I would certainly not, if I was living in one of those houses, I would not want a parking lot with big, with lights and everything going right up to my backyard. So, I certainly would want to respect having some green space left around the parking lot. And I think, you know, in the square that I drew, if you take a look at, you know, the existing parking area, you know, it's roughly size, it's probably a little larger than that. So, I guess the intent of the drawing is to show the willingness to leave green space in the area as well.
I'm sorry, Dan, which drawing are you referring to or charing?
The last page.
Her last page where he shows the...
Yeah, it's certainly, it's nothing done by an engineer. It's me on the computer. Did I not give you a last page?
No, we have no last page.
Well...
That would explain why I can't figure out what you're looking at.
And from the Google map, it appears to be...
My secretarial skills or, you know...
Okay. Now it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So, from the Google map, it also appears to be pretty well wooded throughout the whole park.
Yeah, it really is very, very densely wooded. And I mean, when you're looking, I mean, it's a pretty big parking lot, and when you're looking at that upper parking lot, you know, even if you double the size of that parking lot into that green space, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be challenging anybody's sightlines or...
Right.
Of course, when the leaves come down and that kind of stuff, and I have to light it, but we could certainly go with, you know, dark sky lighting and all those things to make that, you know...
How many parking spaces do you think you would need?
I would probably say for an, for us to be able to have another wedding, probably somewhere between 100 and 125 more spaces.
How many do you currently have?
I couldn't tell you.
It's not really marked. I know it's hard to tell.
I'm sure it's on something, but, and it's probably something I should have looked at before coming, but I don't know.
I went downstairs and I couldn't tell you. I want to say...
I think it's 120 maybe.
Yeah.
Somewhere around that.
I would say it's around there.
Yeah, 110.
And it also depends how people park.
Yeah.
Now, Parcel A, is that currently parked? That's being used as parking?
Well, Parcel, where it says Parcel A, yeah, that's a parking lot right now that goes all the way up. Kind of where you see the little, like, bushes and that, that's some wooded tree line and a little hill that comes down, and then there's the grass area where I kind of drew. And maybe a potential option, if this up here wasn't an option for us to put additional parking in.
Is this relatively flat?
It's pretty flat up there, yeah. There are some, as you go in a way, that it's a little bit of slope, and then as you go further back, it kind of slopes down and it hits off to, I would say, the, I'm not sure what that street is over there.
See, like, kind of where it says snell?
Kind of, kind of goes up gradually over there at the topography. And there's some nice, along some of the borders of the property, there's some farmer's walls and that kind of stuff, but I wouldn't envision wanting to get into any of that.
And Jeanne, rezoning would require a vote at town meeting, right?
That's correct.
One thing I look at, just kind of a crazy idea, is like, I don't know if you need this to be paved or not. As you probably know, there's like limited soccer fields and fields in town, and I look at this as a flat piece of land, and I'm wondering if it did go to town meeting, if there was some sort of combination between parking and a field that you would actually probably get a lot of support from the town. I don't even know if that's, that's just a crazy idea I'm throwing out there, but... I could be crazy.
Well, so that's kind of like an exaction for zoning, so you can't really say to somebody, gee, maybe if you do this, it'll be more palatable or more successful to get the approval.
Oh, okay.
So, it's, you know, I understand what you're saying. I think the other issue is, is that if a developer builds a soccer field and wants to convey that to the town, it's kind of skirted procurement laws, so not exactly appropriate either.
Gotcha.
So, nice idea, but maybe not ever.
Yeah. I just know every...
Particularly, you'd think probably the parking you'd want to have all season too, so certainly, you know, pavement of some sort would be in order.
Yeah, and I think as well as leaving a green space, you'd, I mean, you'd have to have a percentage of impervious to, you know...
How much of a setback do you anticipate having from the property lines where the house, where people, their houses are, for your parking? I mean, you're saying you're going to create a buffer zone, but do you have an idea of how many feet that would be?
I really don't, but, you know, I would, I would estimate that it probably would be, it probably wouldn't be that difficult to leave between 75 and 100 feet, you know, all the way around.
Heather, the area that's, shows the encroachment, that has a measurement of, a little hard to read, but I think 31 feet to the area that's cleared.
Yeah.
So, I would say it's maybe 75 feet to where the line's drawn.
Yeah, because the one up there, there's like 55 feet.
I see.
So, I would say probably 70 feet, something like that.
Yeah.
I see.
And it's a pretty good, you know, setback.
That is.
There's no question about that. And even from grasshoppers, even longer, you know, based on that. And you think that, you know, just roughly, the 100, 125 spaces could probably be laid out within that area?
Oh, I, I think so, yeah.
And would you use asphalt or would you use crushed rock like you have in the rest of the parking area?
In the parking area that we have up here, it's asphalt, and my guess is we would probably do it in asphalt for the...
So, Parcel A is asphalt, so you'd continue it in there?
Yeah. We used regrind in a parking lot that we created by taking the home down and inman, and it's nice because it filters water, but it's, it's not easy to maintain like asphalt.
Russ, do you have any thoughts or comments?
No, I, my own personal opinion, I prefer to go that route with Parcel B versus taking the green space along Route 20.
I agree.
You know, I think it'd be worthwhile, give it, you know, give it our best shot and see what town meeting, you know, obviously, I would love to hear the input from the abutters, you know, through the...
Process.
The process we do.
Yeah, the public hearing process.
You know, the public hearing and everything, so, but I would, you know, I personally, I don't, you know, I live on Cedar Street and, and I've been to several of the functions there, and I know what he's talking about with the, you know, I think it's complimentary to him to have the shared parking with the veterinarian and the wild bird store when it has to be, and, you know, he's working cooperatively with his neighbors and, obviously, I'd like to hear what all the abutters have to say, but I think, I think a better option, in my opinion, is going with the Parcel B versus taking the, the green space in the front.
Great. Any other thoughts or...
Well, I think the consensus is that, you know, this is a pretty good idea that we probably would be able to support, given, you know, being able to take it through with the details and, you know, seeing what the support is certainly from the neighbors and then overall the community. But I agree with Russ. I think it's a much better option than anything else presented, and, you know, certainly preserving that parcel of grass in the front really adds so much more to the visual, you know, concept from the street and the way that building's set and everything. I think that really is a good way to go.
Does he have enough time to get it on the next annual town meeting?
The annual? Oh, absolutely, for the annual. My recommendation would be that you come in and we go through the process, and I would probably do it as soon as possible. I mean, we're having a special town meeting Monday, but I don't know if anything else would come up over the winter, but we'd be ready, and if not, we'd be ready for the annual.
If I shifted gears with you guys, because this only came up yesterday with discussions with some of the investors, they said, well, if we were to go for a zoning change, why wouldn't we consider putting a small inn on the property of, say, 10 or 12 rooms? Similar to kind of what the public house is doing, only on a much smaller scale, but certainly for us, if we put an inn in there with parking, there's no question that, you know, we would have a lot of usage for the rooms, and it would also help us build a little bit more of a business client function base versus just wedding base for us. And I don't know how much more complicated that becomes if you're going for a zoning change, if it's all zoning change, or if it's, you know, if the, I guess if the end use has to be fully spelled out for the zoning change that you were considering, seeing if we were going to change Parcel B to commercial tourist, do we have to say that it's, hey, it's specifically for a parking lot, or would we say we're just going for a zoning change to be able to use the space?
Yeah, good. Jeanne, you want to weigh in on that?
See, so when you, theoretically, when you go for a zoning change, you just, you have to just say that you'd like it changed to commercial tourist, and then what the voters have to recognize is that anything that's permitted in that district could then be allowed, which is why sometimes it makes it difficult for people to support zoning changes, because you'll hear people say, well, we have to think about, anybody could do any of those things that are allowed in that bylaw, because then even if the zoning change passes, you'd have to go through all the approval processes.
Right. Now, would there be a way to, if I were to say, okay, we're going to move forward on pursuing a zoning change for that property, would there be a way to, say, take a portion of it, but leave the rest of it suburban residential, or would it be that the whole parcel would have to go? Just meaning if I drew a line across the property and said, I'm going to leave two-thirds suburban and, you know, one-third, and gave people a level of confidence that we were factoring in zoning areas, or is there another way to do that through conservation or...
Well, actually, what you could do is have a plan done by your engineer, showing the area that you would like rezoned, and have that on engineered plan, and then ask them to do a meets and bounds description of the parcel that you would like changed, and then we would use that instead of the whole parcel.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts on it?
No, that gives me some help and direction and taking some next steps.
Thinking about this inn idea would be in the area that you've outlined in red, it would be part of that, it would be there, and so the parking for that location would be included in your original footprint that you were talking about for parking? Wouldn't be additional then?
Right. It would, I mean, this is certainly not to scale and not drawn by an engineer, but if I said, hey, I'm going to leave a 50-foot band of trees around the whole property, you know, yeah, the inn would take some spaces and then we would benefit from the rest of the parking. It wouldn't be, we're not thinking a large inn of a lot of rooms, like, we're talking like 10 to 12 rooms.
That's what you said, right.
Yeah, just to support the, you know, the weddings that are there on the weekend. We're always asked, do you guys have a place to stay? Do you have a place to stay?
Jeanne, how would that affect, how would we, if this, we proceed, if he proceeds with your drawing and so on, how do you then protect the buffer zone with the zoning change so that we don't come back five years from now and say, well, we need to take the buffer zone out and create more parking?
That would require another zone change, so it would require another public hearing, another town meeting.
The only part that would change was the red outline part, and the rest of it would stay as suburban residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what you're suggesting is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Again, you know...
You think you'd have a better shot that way too?
Yeah.
Yeah, again...
Because you don't want to find out that three years from now, we're now going to take out what's left.
Right.
Right.
And, but it's not...
Yeah, or, you know, if it was our intention to be good neighbors, and at some time down the road, we sold the property, that we would want that to carry forth with the new owners and not have the new owners go in and chop down all the trees for more parking. I mean, I think a lot of what Table Three has tried to do in town is to be good employee, employer, a good partner, work with the town, you know, to be a good citizen, you know, and...
And driving by there, no one's going to really notice a change.
Yeah.
You know, it's only, the parcel itself would notice a change, but the surrounding people driving on Cedar Street and so on, or the front on Route 20, wouldn't even notice that that had changed.
Right. And if we did put a small building up there in terms of in-in, it would be in a post-beam structure that the, you know, the newer buildings are built in and would match the style of the buildings, and so we kind of, in one of the marketing pieces about the property and marketing weddings, we say it's a nice colonial village setting, and that's what we'd want to keep there as well. So, I mean, that was just kind of a offhand end of the discussion, discussion yesterday, but...
You kind of threw that by me, too.
Yeah, but I figured I would just throw it out there. I mean, I was, up until yesterday, I was planning on just discussing parking.
Right. But I really, I mean, if it is an option and it's something that really looks feasible, then this would certainly be the time to do it, because then it could be, you know, completely shown what the plans are, and, you know, leaving the outside edge whatever you can as suburban residential would certainly protect the area. So, ideally, you know, you'd be presenting, you know, just what it is you're planning on doing, and there wouldn't be any additional concerns about, you know, future changes.
Yeah, and I think some of that discussion came up because we, you know, we were talking about the Beaman's House and, you know, well, maybe we should buy it anyways when it becomes available, just because it's landlocking our property, and then it's like, well, what would we do with it? Well, you know, we could Airbnb it on the weekends, because every, you know, wedding party would surely rent it out, and, and we kind of led to, well, why don't we just build our own, you know, inn for people? Do we have, you know, the confidence that we'd sell it out and be able to do it? We're like, yeah, you know, without question, so...
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
I guess it would be a, you know, nice use of the property for, for us and be productive for the town as well.
I think so, right.
You know, we all have to win, right?
Very good.
I'll give you this one, Jeanne. This one's complete.
Thank you.
Sorry about leaving your last page out. Thanks, everybody, for coming in.
Oh, thank you. I enjoyed it.
Helping us explore some ideas. Appreciate it.
Great, thanks. Hey, Jeanne, the town planner update?
Just not much, really. I think at the last meeting, I let you know that we were approved to proceed with our Complete Streets prioritization plan, and our kickoff staff meeting for that will be October 31st, so I expect we'll be having some meetings upcoming on that that it would be great to have the planning board's participation on. And then our Green Communities designation application is finally nearly complete, and that will be filed before the deadline of October 26th.
Great.
I am on vacation the first week of November. Our next meeting is November 13th. As of right now, we have no applications, so we'll see what comes in. I'm not aware of anything coming in, but you never know. Probably we'll have some A and Rs or things anyway, because it's the only November meeting, so...
Good.
And that's all I have.
Very good. And we'll get the town meeting next week?
Oh, yes. That was on my list, too. Thank you for reminding me. Town meeting Monday night. The adult-use marijuana bylaw is on the warrant, as is the underground utility study, which was not supported by the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee did support the adult-use marijuana bylaw, six to two, I Six to two, I think it was, Charlie.
I think it was six to two, yeah.
Six to two.
Yeah, good.
We'll hope for the best because we need to have a bylaw.
Okay, very good. Russ, any old business?
Jean, touching on the Green Communities, I saw in the paper this week that numerous grants were awarded to numerous cities and towns. Does that mean we're out of the loop for this year and we won't qualify till next year? Or is it, has it come out several times a year or...
So part of designation is an initial grant amount. So we'll get an initial sum of money once we're designated to do some of the items that are identified in our energy reduction plan for this year. And then once we complete that grant, we'll be eligible to apply for the competitive grants each year based on our plan, so...
I noticed over at McDonald's, there was a tree crew in there today. I don't know if they were just trimming or if they were taking trees down. Is somebody keeping an eye on that, that meets the site plan that they came in with?
I wasn't aware that they were taking any trees down. They were supposed to be doing some pruning on some of the trees, so...
Like I said, that may be all they were doing, but they were there all day, so...
Oh, maybe they were just hungry? I'm not sure. I'll have to check on that. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
That's all, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Heather.
I just have one thing, Jean, you indicated there's only one meeting in November, but our notes indicated November 27th.
Didn't we change that?
From last time.
Oh, you know what it was when we were so many members short? We had decided to try just to have the one, but that's a good point. We do have the 27th on there, so if nothing for the 13th, then if everyone could hold the 27th, will everyone be in town back from Thanksgiving plans? Thanks, Heather, for that all about that. And then December for, actually for our newest member, December 11th is the hopefully one and only December meeting.
Very good. Mike?
I don't think so. I don't have anything.
Probably no old business at this point.
It's all new business to me.
All right, good, good. We'll start over there then. Russ, new business? Heather?
Also.
Any other new business? No? Okay, great, very good. Okay, well, welcome once again. Yeah, let's go, that's right. So motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second? On favor? Thank you, very good. All right.